I will call this January twenty first meeting of the HRC. Please rise if you can, remove your hats and join us in the debate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the nation of God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. All right, everyone should have two packets hopefully we're able to go through all of those. Meeting called the word seventeen out attendance Justin Albright, President Mike Wallace here, Tom Reese.
Here.
Tammy Greditch.
Here.
John Spinks up here, Brett Galvin.
Present.
Randy Decker.
Present.
Linda Brethner.
No.
Brad Ladwick.
Mayor.
Josh Noel.
Present.
J B Uzla.
Present.
All citizens, we have no public hearing, so there's no signing sheet. So we have some eventos to this agenda. We had requested an updated agenda, which we did not get, but we will take a look at some of them. One of those things is election of officers. Remember again where we have to pick those as well as hire our attorney. So we have to pick a president, a vice president, and then the attorney. First off, I need a. I need a motion to amend the agenda. Include election of officers.
Someone guessing.
Justin, there's a motion, is there a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, any extensions? Motion passes. First off, before we get going, I just wanted to welcome Sagar to the council and she will be filling the remaining three years of the seat that was vacant, so. Soon, soon, we will have an email for her and a contact information being updated for everybody. So the first thing we have in front of us is presence or nomination for president.
I'll make a nomination or make a motion or I'll make a nomination that we make John Spinks president.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We will open this up for BP. Is there a motion for BP?
I make a motion for Justin Albright for the vice president.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five vote. Congratulations. We need to hire our town attorney. Is there a motion for a town attorney? Going through the pile of applicants.
I'll make a motion that we retain Brett Coven as our attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Tammy.
There are motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
All right, all the comments. The town council would like to let everyone know that the agenda for our meeting is available online on the town website Friday before we meet to allow citizens to come and speak on topics before decision is made. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on our website for our next meeting. In order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, which is today's business, please state your name and address before your comments to three minutes. Comments will only be allowed during the public comment section of this meeting directly after the statement is read or recorded.
We are.
Excellent. Is there any public comment on any of the agenda items? Any public comment? Any public comment? Please let the record show the public comment was called for three times. No utility adjustments, Jamie?
No.
Okay, so is it the opinion of the clerk if you do not need to approve workshop minutes for the Hurst since the topic, even though the topic of her business is discussed in workshop?
They as hell as one meeting, so if you want me to put them in both minutes, both HRC and in the council in the future, I can, but it's.
It's a will of the council.
Yeah.
I can look at that, just keep the one record, but in both meetings, so.
Okay, so thank you. All right, so then we will consider when looking at the workshop minutes as well as the December seventeen twenty twenty four minutes for a motion to approve.
Oh my God, what did you do?
I'm Justin.
That was of your crap.
There being a motion, is there a second?
I won't.
I had named it despite what we read.
Again?
All these years that we've been friends.
There we go, excellent. All right, I'm sorry, there was a motion for the minutes, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five vote. Unanimous consent vote. This allows us to vote on ordinance as long as you you have unanimous consent. If not, then we would have to in some cases show this or read this twice. So is there a motion to take into consideration the ordinances on the dock throughout the agenda? As unanimous consent? Is there a motion?
Someone guessing.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Tammy.
There are motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nothing under old business, moving to new business, boat water sale, Randy?
Do I know about some of the issues we're having with policy was put together with public works and his office, his office. This is a policy for us to sell the water. Policy explains everything, but the second part is a sales agreement, which would be the record. If you notice on the sales agreement, you don't got the current rates. I'm actually working with my grounds to increase those. But in the policy, they'll lose to their current rate structure, so once we have those.
So. Can you give us an example of where this would happen?
We have a lot of baby companies when they melt, you have well growers who have, for example, I think we've sold a hundred thousand the last week to some company that's doing something on two and sixty five. About two semis in here a day, sometimes three, so. Again, it takes time out of our day and it takes time out of the women in the office. So that's why we're kind of looking for rates. It's gotta be beneficial for everyone. And it helps us with our unaccounted water, third water loss.
And where will this be held? Let's say ten years from now, we're all retired and move to the Orient?
So another great question. Well, being our standard procedure, it's helpful more than I. So we're in the SOP manual. Yes.
Randy's more with Tahiti, yeah.
Oh, I just saw that. I didn't realize what the time in bathroom. I'm sorry.
All right, you're out. Okay. Mike, are you in favor of this is?
Yes, that's also my one.
There is a motion by Mike, is there a second?
What's that, can you, Justin?
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, any decisions? Okay, five of them. Passes. Service truck purchase, Randy?
Yes, we are, we needed to purchase a service truck in twenty twenty four, was unable to find one. Kind of shifting gears from when we began in two thousand thirteen. We're actually purchased a pickup truck, a F three fifty, and then had to take its materials, I wanted to have a bed put on it. Believe it or not, it's maybe about ten thousand dollars cheaper. We were unable to find the service truck that we were wanting for. So I am asking to purchase the twenty twenty four F three fifty from those that paid forty eight thousand one hundred and one dollars.
And that's what we paid for, money that we've already set.
Yeah, so we have fifty thousand left in the twenty twenty four budget. In local orders, we're putting back from our.
Now he'll pay for the retrofits too as well.
Twenty twenty five ones will pay for the service bed and stuff.
Okay. We don't have the service bed and the bodies?
No, he took this whole transfer, and he's got a truck, and we got a little truck, and they're sitting all along.
Okay. Mike, is this your?
This is my recommendation and motion to purchase.
Right, Mike has made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Justin.
I did check on the service bodies and if he doesn't have it in stock, he can get it within a week. And then something two years ago was twenty months out, so.
All right, there has been a motion and a second, any others? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. We have Andy's out of time function to consider, Randy?
Yeah, and thank you for this one, Mike knows. Andy did some, I got him to send up the Lance program after our meeting, he has class. He needs to attend the spring split. Somewhere for two and a half days, so you've got to copy the time request. I could move away from February, but I should release that a lot of it, so. This is part of our schooling, it should be reimbursed in the grant that we got.
Randy?
Yes, my recommendation, motion to ultimately, Andy's expense to.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Tammy.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All those opposed. Moving on to the ordinance we have to consider. This was a table item actually from last month. This is ordinance number twenty twenty five twenty one dash twenty five dash over two. This is just public works salaries.
Just public work?
Just public work salaries. Brendan, have you reviewed this?
I have.
And then we are free to move on this. Brett?
Yes, we are.
All right, so the corrections that we were meaning to have done, I think from last month, have been clarified, so. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the salary ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one dash twenty one dash zero two.
Okay, Mike just made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Tammy.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All of you in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. All right, the only other good business that I would like for the council to consider is a put into the minutes, I think it took me six weeks to read the time to go through all of these packets and separate them. Is would the council consider someone making a motion to have these organized, which I'm very grateful that Jamie gave us a separate agenda, but all of the items underneath and stapled together, so or not stapled, but clipped together, so that we can go through them a reasonable amount of time. I should be able to pick up my packet and be able to move through.
They're not stapled, but they are in the order which they appear.
We're not.
So we've done that motion. Justin?
There is a motion, is there a second? There is a motion by Justin, a second by Sagar, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. Thank you, we have in front of us. There was some confusion because these were all put together, but there is two accounts payable registers, one for your council packet and one for the hurt. There is not an appropriation report for her because that all is maybe described, going to be approved now in the town council pack. So for here, you should have this. Which is the regulatory commission dispersness, thank you for labeling that. The accounts payable register. The very first one of these should be in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and fifty three dollars. Thirty two cents. You can add what you have. As we can see from the shop link here, unfortunately, the paperwork does not come in that way.
No.
Justin hasn't, Sagar hasn't. So what happens is we have to read into into the official minutes, these three copies, which are relating to this and also some appropriation for them. The appropriation report being here is really kind of the issue. So under totals, we have nine hundred and eighty two thousand fourteen dollars and eight cents. Under transfers, we have two hundred and ninety six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty two cents. And we have a net of six hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars forty six cents. Is there a motion to approve? Good one.
So move, Justin.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five.
I don't have anything else that is on the agenda, is there anything for Randy, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do have a lot, thanks, Jim. I met Mary Jane on a Friday with regard to grants. She come up with a couple, we got a follow up meeting next Friday, I guess thirty first at one o'clock with C D A. She had a couple of possibilities, this is kind of a two part thing, we're going Bob Reynolds with the race. We would be going back and forth, we're supposed to have a road track only later this week. Some inquiries are dependent on how much money we can match, so we won't know that until we get it. Bob Reynolds report. So we are making progress on that, so I'll keep you more informed as that comes along. The Army Corps requested the funds for the Romanian funds for St. Lass. I did meet with Mike Keller of River yesterday. He believes that they will, once they start the project, Mike, it will be bigger than four months. They're gonna run two crews. We're looking to be pretty aggressive. So that's good news. And then, since we got our last meeting last Tuesday, we had two main breaks Friday and on Sunday. You guys have done a remarkable job dealing with the elements and through the challenges we got. So that's all I have on the utility side.
Anything for Randy?
So thank you guys for all you do, especially in this fall.
Absolutely. I also want to add, well, Randy, because at home owner in Prestonville had a sheer valve of some kind at the, at the house. And within ten minutes, there was somebody that was out there. It wasn't, Dustin had gone out there to the Buffalo box, which is the box that we have all in our front yards, shut off the mains so the water stopped filling up the backyard, so that type of response times which we get in a small town, I appreciate it. They're gonna pay us for us?
I may know, to give the customer a number, customer fix the issue, Dustin went back out and held later and had his water back on.
Awesome, very cool. Thank you, Dustin. You got anything for us, Brett?
Awesome.
Anybody else? Any comments from the perk? Jamie, anything else? I'm sorry?
No.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, second, Justin.
All those in favor? Okay. Motion passes five. For the, for the everyone sitting here, the other couple of questions I have for documents are in our packet somewhere. You don't need.
Yeah.
Go on, it's just a minute. All right, I will call the town council meeting of January twenty first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the nation of God, indivisible, for the creating, justice, law. We'll call Justin. President. Wallace here. David Greditch.
Here.
John Spinks here. Sandra Rice.
Here.
Brett Galvin, present. Randy Decker, present. Linda Brethner. Here, Brad Ladwick.
Mayor.
Josh Noel.
Present.
J B Uzla.
Present.
So Jamie, do you have an updated?
No, I do not, Jim.
You don't have an updated agenda for this one either?
No, sir.
We had requested an updated agenda, we may notice that things were not on here and we did not receive that. All right, so the first thing we're going to do is we're going to have to amend a few things on this agenda, so you'll have to write them down. The first thing is moving the election of officers, which happens every January in our first meeting. You'll recall that we had done that at our January first meeting last year, we moved to this late date because it's not Christmas. So that's one event. Do you have updated minutes about the duplicate ordinances, numbers?
I don't understand the question, sir.
If the minutes you have in the first ordinances from last month, there were duplicate numbers. We also have November workshop minutes as opposed to December's workshop.
Well, the Decembers haven't been done or approved, and the November ones would be in the December minutes.
So we need, we need the December ones now to approve.
They're not done yet.
So they're not here.
No.
So we have the, why do we have the November?
The November ones were in with the December minutes. They're all the, they're supposed to be there.
The November workout then it should not be in the December.
Okay.
So that is going to be a change as well. There are the officers, we have the NERC's appointment for our new business. In the old P O brand is not here.
Well, I expected they didn't know that it was going to be approved.
Well, we definitely will be able to do it, and it was in the email, no ask. So we don't have those, so is there a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
So move, Justin.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Tammy.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. First thing we have to do before moving on to anything other than that is the election of officers. We have the hurt, we have the president, VP, and town attorney. So if you understand why this is, needs to be repetitive, state board accounts said that the, the town, I believe, was in violation not having separate meetings for these two boards since about nineteen eighty eight, nineteen eighty nine. So we are striving for the next couple of months to make sure that we are within what they're asking us to. So we need to, once again, elect a president, vice president, hire the town attorney. Is there a motion for president?
Make a motion for John Spinks to be president.
Is there a second? Mike has made, Tammy's made a motion, Mike has made a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. VP, is there a motion for VP?
I make a motion for Justin Albright to be VP.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. We need to rehire our town attorney as in the custom. We have Brett has done an excellent job for us over the years. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we retain Brett Coven as our town attorney, Justin.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five. Thank you everyone for serving. Move on to public comment. The town council would like to let everyone know if the agenda for our meetings is available online and the town website Friday before we meet to allow citizens to come to speak on topics before decisions are made. This meeting has been, is being recorded and will be made available on our website for our next meeting. In order to give everyone an opportunity to speak and get through today's business, please state your name and address before limiting your comments to three minutes. Comments will only be allowed during the public comment section of the meeting directly after the statement is read. Is there any questions on any of the agenda items from the public? Anyone? Any questions, any comments? Any comments? The record show that it was asked for three times. I'd like to thank everybody who is here, though, that's good. Okay. So December council, Jamie, do you have an answer for the duplicate?
You have the December minutes, correct?
I look at the December seventeenth meeting minutes, I have under ordinance as a resolution, unanimous consent vote, and we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve dash seventeen.
Well, that's the only minutes you have this month of the December council. The workshop has not been done.
That's what I'm asking. The second entry is ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve dash seventeen, which is a saddle.
From last month, it goes in, those are in with the December minutes, those were presented at the December meeting. Everything is attached to the December minutes that happens in December.
There are different ordinances, so they should have different numbers. They have the exact same ordinance.
Okay. So you have two of them.
Which one is which, we can make that.
I don't know that the ordinance has made, I'll have to come to the job.
I mean, we could just do a, for the annexation, just give the twenty seventeen and salary, it's gonna just do.
Yes, the annexation ordinance wasn't even done.
I, I know, but they're in the minutes here, and so we should have the correct numbers out, which is why I sent them to you.
We can just do a dash one.
Yeah, just do a dash one.
Or the second one.
Yeah.
Salary ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve dash seventeen salary ordinance, if you just initial that, twenty twenty four dash twelve dash seventeen dash one.
All right, we do not have the December workshop minutes, so.
You do have them, they're in front of you.
We do not have the December workshop.
Oh, the workshop, no.
Okay, so we discussed this before. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with this change?
The change will bring.
The change of being dash four.
The dash one is the salad, so there is a difference.
I'll approve this. Right, no.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve whether the. Yes, but you said minutes and not approving minutes and looking.
Minutes.
Oh, we are approving minutes.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
I apologize.
This version, the title.
So we're still three, not the workshop.
Twenty twenty-four, then plus seventeen. Your copy of it. No, this is for the regular.
That's my one.
No, it's a good one.
So Mike has made a motion to approve with the changes.
Oh, I'm sucking that, Justin.
There being a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Motion passes five. Somebody make a note, please, and we'll have to approve the December workshop minutes in February when they're completed. Unanimous consent vote, we did this for the HERC, so we would, uh, need to be able to pass that again and consider these ordinances that are in front of us. Is there a motion for unanimous consent vote?
So, Justin.
There being a motion, is there a second?
No, second.
There being a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, motion for unanimous consent, this five. We have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash two one salary ordinance. Is this the one that we just, that you sent us an update for?
Yes, sir.
So the one that is in your packet, you can put it next to it?
Well, everybody's got to do one.
Right, but the one that they add to the beginning. Should probably be boarded out so there is no confusion. It is on the back of this cover sheet. Okay, and then it's the following. Some of the concerns we had that were in the emails and back to cover sheets were that the planning commission VCA stormwater per meeting at the bottom of the page doesn't seem to have any funding underneath it. Uh, or it should at least include, uh, stormwater in it as well in the heading, probably without the rest. And at the top of the next page, there are two sections for stormwater reporting. For the exact same dollar amount, was there a reason for that, Jamie?
Must have just been a typo.
I will, okay. And then we have a free floating twenty-five dollars. And it says that it's being paid out in general. We said if you determine that's the twenty-five dollars.
That's stormwater, yes, yes.
So then it's a new ordinance, will we quickly take a look at that or is it stormwater?
It just says general.
Well, then it's not. We'll have to make that.
Cross it off and put it show.
Make that change. Everyone should see a copy of the new ordinance here in front of us. It says the same number. Would you get a copy of it?
I do, Karen.
So on the second page, if everyone can take a look, please. Okay, so Jamie, do you have it in front of you?
Yes.
If I'm looking at it incorrectly, I'm more than willing to be open to that, uh. Under section three, you had the stormwater, thank you, and then the very first thing is we have complaining commission VCA stormwater, and it says per meeting and fund, right?
Right.
So should that be opened as well?
No. Because the planning commission VCA and stormwater, it's a permitting, uh, fee and a fund fee. The first one that, uh, is is the stormwater recording, I mean, the project secretary, this is correct.
Cool, planning commission recording, we're in at ninety-five sixty-eight, VCA is the same, stormwater is the same, this is the permitting fee that gets paid for the recording secretaries. Stormwater recording, stormwater voted some time ago, I think even prior to us, to pay the, uh, pay their secretary twenty-five dollars additional. It says that it's being paid out in general, but needs to be changed to stormwater. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Everything else seems to be okay, they bumped up everybody into the thirty dollars, so that's cool. Okay. So moving back to this, this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash twenty-one. This is employees, uh, against state board of accounts told us to begin to separate this, we had for years had it under a single salary ordinance. We have one for her, we have one for employees, and then we will be addressing one for for elected officials. This particular one can be changed periodically if we wanted to throughout the year, same thing with the HERC. The, uh, set, the one for the elected employees can only be set one time on the entire year. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash twenty-one with the addendums?
So I will make a motion that we have group ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash two one with the amendment, uh, changing the stormwater recording twenty-five dollars from general to stormwater, and I also ask that this be retroactive to the first of the year.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I will say it.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, motion passing five. All right, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash twenty-one dash three. This is the ordinance that we have discussed, dealing with the, uh, with the elective officials paying, which was worked out and went through, is now accurate. Looks like all the headings are, aren't correct. We still have a general crossed out, so that will be, I assume, corrected.
General crossed out.
If you look at the ordinance itself, um, under clerk treasurer, it says clerk treasurer general, and general is struck through.
I don't have that.
I don't have that.
Yeah, mine is open.
Mine's open, everything I have is open.
All right, so is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance, uh, two zero two five dash zero one dash two one dash three.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, motion passes five.
Oh, on the back of the page.
Yes. Now, Brian, just for the writers to review those. Yes, thank you. So we have the OPO grant that is in front of us here. What had happened was is that there was a grant that was paid through county, I believe, chief, not state. A state that allowed for overtime for areas in which the state had determined were necessary, yes. Uh, was available to our officers. Chief Noel is the charge of it, and Jamie administered the finances. Uh, they are changing from OPO to CHIR, to CHIR. And so what happened was is the state board of accounts needed us to zero out the uh, zero out the OPO, so that we can move forward into CHIR. This has gone through several administrations, and we have found that there were some discrepancies. The town council last month hired Susan Elliott to go through it, and she has provided us with it. Susan, so tomorrow morning, when you guys go into, when Jamie goes into the, uh, office, ultimately, after all of the things listed here, how much money is coming from where and going to where?
Overall, eight hundred and eight, the fourth fence will be going from general to the OPO, to throw it out.
And it will be done?
It will be done and closed.
Okay.
I thought it was seven hundred and ninety-three dollars.
And I thought so too.
Going through it, it's a little bit off, you know, a couple of dollars, eight oh eight, for the amount of time we've gone through it. Are we okay with just being done, but not looking for any?
Uh, so at one point, uh, we were talking about things being down to the penny, and since we needed to be down to the penny, I fear that eight oh eight oh four is actually going to keep us somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifteen dollars over in it. If we transfer eight oh eight oh four. Based off of what I'm seeing here, the fund now sits with eight oh eight oh four in it right now as the actual amount of money that's in there. And by moving twenty, uh, two hundred and fifty, forty into it, also four hundred and twenty-nine fifty-four, which is a reimbursement for overage that was paid for FICA and, uh, HERC and Medicaid. Uh, and then also transferring money back out of it to pay back the general fund of twenty-two hundred and eight, two thousand two hundred and eighty-one forty-nine. That would leave us in the negative in the OPO grant of seven hundred and ninety-three fifty, fifty technically. Uh, and then that would need to be paid from the general fund again to the OPO to close it out. Which would also match what the clerk treasurer did tell us last month, but it just wasn't confirmed by the grant administrator. As such, has been incorrect to be correct. Am I correct on that?
Yes, the seven hundred and ninety-three dollars is what I'm under the understanding is correct.
What do you think, Karen?
The seven ninety-three fifty-one was after the corrections, the payroll corrections, the seven ninety-three fifty-one was the offage. Overall, overall, if you consider all, all four of the transactions and the balance being eight oh eight oh four, in order to close it, after those are processed, the balance will be zero. Overall, it was eight oh eight oh four being moved from general to OPO.
So this is what I'm looking at. I will make a motion that we will, uh, either approve seven hundred and ninety-three fifty to go into it and/or eight oh eight, uh, oh four. Whichever one of those two we need to use in order to close it out, needs to be recorded next month. He was in a letter from the state, uh, from the clerk treasurer, saying that not only is this fund closed, zeroed out, but which one of those two funds we use in order to make it zero.
Okay, so then the motion probably is to not to exceed the eight oh eight oh four.
Definitely.
And to exceed a letter from the clerk treasurer next month, determining exactly which amount it was. Jamie, is that something that you'd be willing to do?
A letter where how much was, was put into the CHIR, I mean, into the OPO fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that it is now completely done.
Zeroed out and done.
So there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I just want to confirm with grant administrator that he's okay with that. Yes, okay, and Karen, you're okay with that as well?
Yeah.
Excellent.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Susan, but I thank you for going through and trying to make heads or tails over, uh, multiple years and doing multiple meetings and presentations. Thank you both. Uh, Chief, thank you, Justin, for the amount of time that you put in there, which was unbelievable. Maybe thank you for working with everybody to try to figure that out. Next. Old business, we have internal control policy that has also been worked on by the chief, as well as Brett and Justin. Did I miss anybody?
The chief hasn't worked on it. People keep giving him credit.
I would like to follow this, so the chief did nothing. And that Justin has been working on this along with Brett, so what did we correct?
Uh, so we corrected two sections in there, and, uh, I do not, page eleven, paragraph twenty-two, if I can, Mr. President. Okay, and what was the other line? Page thirteen, paragraph five. So yeah, it's been, uh, revisions, and does it conform with any legal or regulatory language that, uh, we need to conform it? Let's see, first, okay. Then I'll make a motion that we accept the internal, uh, control policy as, uh, as amended. If there's no objections.
If there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, five. We have in front of us the, uh, flex, Susan Elliott, flex local government consulting contract. So an example of what it is that she does is what she was just reporting to us. This allows sort of contracted, uh, either by the clerk treasurer or the things that are widely related and stipulated, and here some of those are budgetary items, some of those are computer issues. The council has the ability to, uh, call on her to assist that she had done in this case. Uh, this is a contract for twenty twenty-five and an hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars not to exceed seven thousand, which has been budgeted. Is there a motion?
I'd like a motion to rehire Susan for professional services.
There's a motion by mine, is there a second?
I'm predicting.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, if it, if we do, uh, approve, uh, the contract, that, uh, we also get monthly invoices, which was asked for last year, and we had not received those in the manner which we asked.
I just sent some to you.
Yeah, they were supposed to be.
They were supposed to be what?
We just get monthly sheet invoices last year, and we got bulk ones two to three times. I don't even know if we got quarterly. We got bulk ones two or three times throughout the last year.
I apologize for that. I've, I've been in Florida probably half a year and half a year here, so she's been at, just going home, so I apologize for that. I'm trying to be better.
Right, so I read. Is that something that Susan, you can add to your contract to put into that for us, please?
Sure will.
Appreciate it. All right, there's a motion and a second with a are we willing to put that in there?
Yeah. What's, what's the motion, Mr. President?
Mike has made a motion to approve Susan Elliott's flex local government consultation contract with the addendum that the, uh, stipulation monthly invoices be sent to the council. We'd like them to place in the packet, email, does it make a difference?
Does it, as long as they get to the, uh, council comfortably.
So that's a motion, Tammy, are you still okay with the second?
Yeah.
There being a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes four. All right, according to the new policy manual that we have just approved, we are required to approve those people who have credit cards, who are holding credit cards. Um, the clerk treasurer has provided us with those names, we have in front of us, Jamie Uzalak has a card, Justin Albright has a card, his name goes to.
Uh, it will be held by, uh, Chief Noel.
So should it say Chief Noel on there, or is that something that we will approve afterwards that he gets to?
I'm not technically a holder, so we're giving permission for the physical card to be held, so it actually should say.
You guys gave him permission last year to hold the card.
Yeah. I mean, if that holds, and I'm fine with that too, but mine isn't on the list. So.
Your name is on the card, that's why it's on there.
But are we removing that and putting the police department on it?
Has to be a town board member.
Has to be a town.
That's why I put it in the, just saying he was the B A's.
That's, that's, that's not accurate.
Well, it was with the bang when I got it, Josh.
State, state board of accounts has stated us numerous times, the police department is bonded employee, they signed me for a credit card. If Justin would prefer it to be in our name, I can definitely.
If Justin preferred to be in our name, I can definitely explore that.
It wasn't through State Board of Accounts that it's.
So, okay, before we start in the yard.
So you can't, you can't.
Just, I'll put my name on it. I don't give, I don't, I don't care.
I'll just take your spot. Congratulations on you.
Here before we start getting involved with this. So I understand that a business account, it usually is X, LLC or incorporation with a name underneath. So if that has to be, then whose name do we put on there? That's the question.
So, so basically, this is, this is the issue for this particular uh item that we're dealing with. It's just the fact that we're actually voting on who physically holds these cards.
Understood.
So my name is on here and I will never physically hold the card, so that's the only issue. My name being on it is an issue that I do have. However, that's something we can do on, and change on a later date.
Understood. So my question is, and I understand what chief is saying, that if he's prohibited from doing that, based on his position as chief and with everything else, who else can we then let's do an alternative? Who would be willing to do that?
I believe you misunderstood. I was, I was making the argument that I'm not permitted in doing that.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, and, and I'll be honest with you, that's not the issue at hand. So I'm fine with that. I just, my name being on here as being uh someone who's gonna be holding one of the credit cards needs to be removed that should be cheap.
And just cross the direct.
The policy is that we are approved, who it is that actually holds the card.
No, I understand. I was, I followed you.
So we have Jamie Usalak as one card holder. We are going to have Chief Noel as the second card holder.
He's at the bottom.
So, and we should probably, going through here, it's kind of a generic list. Um, if you don't mind and Jamie confirm as I read through this to make sure that I have this correct. We're gonna have Jamie Usalak as having one of the actual credit cards that we hold.
Correct.
Is it a Mastercard, Visa?
Um, I think it's a Mastercard. I don't know. It's through Diamond State Bank. It's not even a credit card anymore. They sold their credit cards, so.
Correct. And then uh the, the one that's held by, you know, in the name of the town councilman is going to be held physically by Josh Noel for a credit card.
Is that a Visa again?
Same one is what I have, same type.
Then Brad Ledwick has, as at this point, has a Casey's uh gas card. And as Green has a Wex gas card.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Scott Seda has a Wex gas card. Adam Wood has a Wex gas card. Uh Sean McCormick has a Wex gas card. Sean Dolan has a Wex cash card, gas card, sorry. And uh Josh Noel also has a Wex gas card. That should be all of our credit card holders. Is that, does it seem like a complete list, Jamie?
Yeah.
And uh Chief, where you guys as well?
Uh, there are several additional Wex cards that weren't listed on there and that um we have these cool gas cards for the reserve officers and um now that one's through town, we actually have an extra one. Uh, I'm holding those cards just not for use, but just for safety and purpose.
All right, so for this to be accurate, I'm going to recommend that we table this and so it's updated with the kind of card that it has, the totality of the top card.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we table it and I'll uh, I'll update what's on there to get a complete list.
For the access as well. Every credit card who is being held by somebody other than everybody should be on this list. Uh, so we have Justin, he's been motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So that should be placed back on the agenda for next month, please.
Are you gonna give me the list, Justin?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure it's complete, accurate, and everybody will get a copy and an email and if you want to, please.
Well, Jamie, can you add which one you physically have, whether it's a Mastercard or it's a Visa?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, we had the nursery appointment. One of the appointments that we did do last month was to nursery. Justin has been the liaison to nursery. Nursery is very important. Born in connection through the five county region that offers up a lot of economic issues. Is there a motion to reappoint Justin?
I'm gonna do a motion.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There being a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. All right, the next thing we have are the storyboards for the library. Who wanted to talk?
Um, so uh, I don't think. We were the two, uh Director and I went to the pharmacy department um at their last meeting. Um, and we chose our storyboard walk, um, having. That'd be a part of us giving, having them have our storyboard walk in their park, the one specifically here at the uh the community center. Okay, both of them, and they are very excited about it. Uh, we wanted to bring this to you guys to kind of like get you involved in this. Um, I don't know if you guys have ever seen one of the stories or know what a storyboard walk is or have heard of, seen a storyboard. So we would have about nineteen.
Yeah, eighteen, eighteen and twenty boards that we would be able to install inside. But would you mind holding that up to the camera so for those people at home, they can see what a wonderful addition it will be? This was, you know, something very similar to it was.
That's included.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
A wonderful addition to your uh park here. Um, the kids will be able to, as they walk along the path up the tree, they'll be able to um read the story and like do any of the motions that happen with it um and and just be really cool and literally see things from the park.
And it'll be approximately twenty of them along the back trail here?
Exactly.
Exactly. And then they'll swap out um at a minimum of every quarter, but generally it's more often, maybe every couple of once. In the winter, it's a little less frequent. Um, but the staff, what they do is they take the storybooks and they make them into digital formats. They have a nice border around it. And then there's an interactive activity and it changes every time between boards. It might be look around you and find a bird. What's that bird's name? What kind of calls it make? And maybe hop backwards, hop like a bunny, different activities that are trying to get them to experience the environment, engage with physical activity, and others at the same time. What a wonderful addition, I think, to the back trail here. We have the park that is under the offices of the human park board, the trail itself, which is why it's coming in front of us, right? Is because the parks department does not manage the trail itself. Anything else?
No, let's go forward.
Okay. Uh, I believe we are, you guys are requesting that Public Works agent installing the Twin Souls. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And you'll be meeting up with Randy in order to be able to uh install those. He said tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
I've given the new board member a tour and six hours of sort of.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think this is gonna be a wonderful addition for this town. We appreciate it. I think that you want to know the new garden, like a branch as well, so they're gonna appear very nicely in our different spots, really enhance. What a great year for our uh, for our parks as well as for uh for our citizens.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? Would you like to make a motion for the storyboard?
I'd make a motion when we move forward on uh cleaning the storyboard places, please.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Thank you so much for your time for.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
All right, the next thing that we need to add to the agenda that wasn't on there, and I apologize when we did the addendum earlier. Jamie, if you're gonna add and update the agenda for the website, maybe add this, this is the the policy manual, the employee policy manual, is that accurate?
Yeah.
I believe you've been working with the organization that does it. You've been communicating back and forth with Jamie about how to fund it.
Yes.
Would you give us a little brief understanding of what it is?
So uh, for the last uh, for the last, that, least uh seven years or so, uh, we have not had an updated employee handbook manual. Um, but uh, but as far as I've been on to this council and other employees that have also been in this town, there has not been an official uh employee handbook that has been given to all of our employees upon their uh, their hiring. So uh, in order to make sure that not only we have one of these uh employee handbooks for our employees, we're gonna have all sorts of uh policies and procedures for them. Um, we uh, we're gonna have a service that's going to uh, to write that for them and um, and maintain uh, maintain the uh, the currency with it on a yearly basis. So the uh, the cost for the uh, a company called New Focus uh uh H R that's out of Indianapolis comes highly recommended from the Kain community of uh which we work very closely with government in the state of Indiana. They uh, they have Osman McKenzie, the uh, the legal team that reviews this as well. Uh, they uh, they work really well with Lexipol, which we have just recently signed on to, and also with American Legal, which is also gonna be holding a lot of our ordinances here very soon. So uh, I feel like they're gonna be a really good addition to um all of the changes that we've been making over the last couple of years. Uh, we uh Brett and uh myself got a chance to speak with um the administrator owner of this uh, this company. And uh, I was pretty impressed with what they're gonna be able to do. What do you think, Brett?
I like it. I hear it's negative, so they gave us some good information and it's gonna work well with Lexipol and you know, make sure they incorporate that in there and make sure that, you know, people doesn't complain with anything that the police department has going on, which is good because we don't wanna interrupt what they have. And uh, you know, I like what I heard, so I have no problem with it. It's up to you guys.
Uh, the cost for this uh is going to be six thousand dollars initially. It's a fixed fee and it's based off of our uh, our amount of our employees that we have townwide. After that, moving forward, there will be an annual subscription service that's going to uh continue to uh update if we have any updates that we need to update to them as well, and it's making sure that we conform with state and federal regulations as well. And then there's also an hourly consulting fee that we can also, uh, if we start having any kind of conflicts, we can help, they can help us to work through those uh for a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So the initial upfront fee for this will be six thousand dollars. So that's what I'll be asking for the consult to uh come up with us.
And the subscription is what per year?
One hundred and fifty dollars.
One hundred and fifty dollars per year and it said it, forget it, they make sure that we're in compliance with all state and federal laws?
Absolutely. It's beautiful. That's how it was sold.
And they will, they're gonna look at all of the things that we're doing this year. If the public is unaware, we are going through and doing a major revision to ordinances and uh, we've done already with the police and their policies as Justin had stated. So Jamie, do we have a way of funding this?
It'll come out of the general plan.
And we, that's not gonna strap us in any way to reform?
Not just six thousand, no.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that.
Oh, no.
No, I have a discussion.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion uh that we uh hire the New Focus R uh H R for the uh formation of a employee handbook, maybe about that six thousand.
Would you, are you going to submit that to Jamie if you haven't already done so and then Jamie will redistribute it so we can put it in the packet?
Yeah, I, I sent it to everybody.
Did you? Okay.
Uh, it went out four days ago.
Okay.
And if you had not gotten it, anybody on the council, please let me know so I didn't send it again.
I just never turned the copy for this. So, okay. Um, so there's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There being a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mike?
Yeah, it's um, before we go ahead and sign the dotted lines, is there any way? I mean, are we gonna have department heads talk to these people to?
Yeah.
Is there guidelines or is it just a, these are laws in the state of Indiana and follow these or is there, does it curtail to our town sort of type thing?
So in order for us to do this, they're gonna be working very closely with our department heads and clerk treasurer with anything that we have already um out there, you know, any kind of. I know that Kate sent uh somebody in an email or earlier today that kind of showed some kind of a employee handbook of sorts. So they will take what we already have and bring it up to date. They'll also work with department heads such as Josh, making sure that any of the policies that he's recently updated in Lexipol will match. Anything that Jamie uh needs to, you know, anything that she's doing for her office as well. That's kind of the way they all work. They will work with every one of our department heads, including Brett, to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
And I think that Lexipol is kind of our spearhead right now because it's the tip of the spear. It's the worst, it's our, it's our most recent type of change with our policy. Keep them on the correct, you know. And so, you know, if that is the most um, like I said, recent and the most timely kind of a, a policy change we've adopted in the last couple of years. So that's one thing that Justin and I were both kind of, especially Justin, who's really griller about the Lexipol and how it's gonna work together and spend, dovetail with what we have. Um, if there is any kind of conflict, she even kind of talked like she would look at, they would look at Lexipol as kind of like the guideline of what we wanna do. It's, it's kind of like, Justin, if I'm, I've already spoken incorrectly yesterday. If it's, if I'm not incorrect, the way they said it was Lexipol will kind of take precedence and kind of guide what we're gonna do with this and kind of dictate our policy manual to an extent concerning the police department, et cetera. I'm not as interested in that. Kind of like, as far as um they're gonna look at what we have in place in the past. And since a lot of it is older, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, it might get negated or just xed out and so and then a hundred and fifty dollars a year, they're gonna review our policies, give us updates on law and changes over the next course of the next amount of time, but they're gonna kind of tell us that. So it's, it's the same thing about American Legal, but just concerning.
So basically to kind of expand also on what Brett was saying, so say uh the instance that uh, you know, there might be an attendance policy that differs from uh, from the clerk treasurer's office itself to, you know, the police department. It will all, it'll also separate those out. It's gonna be absolutely sure that everybody's uh, you know, everyone's uh titles are, are being addressed.
Okay, so Randy will be in the loop on all this, so she has some different rules for this guy's then?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all like. We're gonna make sure that the utility department's also included in the whole making type deal?
Yeah, we're gonna make sure that all the department heads have a chance to look at this before it goes online.
Randy, do you have any questions or concerns about doing this?
Yes. Um, been in thirteen years. We've never updated that employee handbook. It's not put a topic. Just curious why all of a sudden, I guess.
Well, over the last couple of years, we've had many uh different instances that we've had to address and we've had to uh change policies on the fly. We, we haven't been on a unified policy for everything across the board. We wanna have one place where when we hire in, they're gonna get an employee handbook just like any other corporation or any other, you know, place of business has. And uh, when looking into this, we uh, we went to other communities and this is the company that's come highly recommended from a lot of local uh communities out here. Couple of just, uh, just mentioned City of Cameron has uh the same company that does their uh employee handbook, uh, Tom and Dyer as well. Uh, so those kind of things. Those are the two that I have.
I know this is great and, and, but I guess I'm backwards planning, so what's the end game and then how do we get there? So that's, I'm, I'm just trying to learn that quickly.
So basically, the end game of why we're doing it is?
What is, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Because we need one out also. I, and I don't disagree with that, but I mean.
I think, I think, I, I think you've needed one all along, you know? I, I think that there's something that we've uh, we've. We've opened up with liability by not having one for so many years, and I believe that there are lawsuits that have led to. Um, uh, to settlements that if we would have had this in place. We might have had a better lane to stand on and fight those lawsuits.
Plus, I think it will help this council, as well as future councils, understand what the procedures are by going to one location for. Uh, the employees, uh, it's very difficult to go through our ordinances and see what has governed what sometimes. And that's gonna bring me, well, let me finish going through, so you, any other?
Yeah, I, I did, I, I don't disagree, I'm just trying to understand how we got from zero to here.
And I, and I really think that this is just in the combination when everything else we're doing from the policy changes and updates that we've done. Police department to the American Legal that's updating our ordinances. I think this is just one of those things that we need to update, just against, you know.
Is there a timeline that we're trying to?
I believe the idea is just to put everything under one.
It's under one of them, bro, so it's easy to find. And, and also, not having one, a huge hurdle. It's a different process.
Hundred percent.
Long overdue. Because every time we kind of ask for SOP, and that's nothing against for treasurer's office, we just, it's just the old regime. Yeah, it's just, we weren't provided anything besides a staple copy of a few documents that were, that were handwritten on a, uh. On a, on a teletype kind of type, but we don't even know when this was from, if it even, if it even adheres to, to most recent law or current law. And so, it's just, it's, right now, the way the workforce is, is that's, uh, we need SOP. And if we can have something that's updated that everybody can live with and can go with, and again, you know, it's, it's going back to the, um. Whole process of including, including clerk treasurer's office, making sure the police departments, because they've already been following Lexipol. For X amount of time, now for, what, two years, chief?
You're right, right here.
Right here, yeah, it's just something that's, it's embedded. And so, you guys have been adhering to that, and it's something you're used to it and familiar with, and, you know, so it's, it's really just about getting. People up to date and making sure that we're covered. Because when we're not covered, it's kind of like asking for a power attorney, you don't need it till you need it, then when you need it, it's too late to get it. Now, if we don't have that SOP in order, and we need it, we're gonna say, well, shit, why did we, excuse my language, well, why did we not have SOP? So.
Brad, you're, uh, hopefully here in the very near future, you're going to have an assistant building inspector, are you okay? Jamie, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Jamie?
I agree with you.
Absolutely. Uh, the, the other question I have for attorney is, is that, and can you look into our ordinances where it makes any reference? To employees, because as we're updating this with American Legal, we may want them just to reference this, this outside document.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Well, this document also will become a, uh, an ordinance of sorts.
Sure.
So, um, so yeah, it will be an outside one. It'll be part of what American Legal passed.
So, the question I have on this is too, but Brad, if you listen to this. Because we have a limited time to get information back to American Legal with these updates. Is this something that we should pass in ordinance stating that this is what we're going to do to the employee handbook ahead of time? Or do we wait until it's actually completed?
I think, and so, yeah, and so we see where, we might not go with these characters yet. It might be something we'll, you know, if we hold off on, if we don't like what we hear after we get everybody's opinion, and we say, you know, in the end. Like Mike said, you know, is this something the department has their, has their influence in? In the end, if we're like, yeah, this isn't really something we want, then adopting an ordinance specifically for that, I would just hold off on that for right now. Um, but I will definitely, we, we can, a hundred percent, I'd best that, wouldn't you? But you, Justin and I are gonna get together on Friday about American Legal.
Cause my question is, is it's a per-page charge when we update this, and so, you know what I mean, so.
I agree.
Yeah, so, uh, when it comes to, uh, actually, you know, creating an ordinance for this, it's unnecessary. Cause once this employee handbook actually goes active, it will, uh, nullify all existing ones that are already been covered by.
Okay, alright, then that's what it is, so we have a, did you have any more questions? Any other questions from the council? Anything to add, Jamie? Okay, is there, there's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh, to hire New Focus, HR to, uh, create an employee handbook for the updated. Okay, the other thing that I have on the agenda is the same thing that we did with HUR. Uh, will this council consider passing a motion that has these packets? Organized and clipped separately from the HUR, uh, following and placed in order of the, uh, the agenda.
Tell me, Johnson?
I have a question, your HRC packet was not clipped separately?
There were two clips, there were documents, some from the, that were, needed to be addressed in the, uh.
HRC.
Council, and some needed to be in the HRC.
Yes.
But they were in the middle. They were in the middle, like all of the, um.
I clipped them all together, when they went to your box, that they were?
Uh, well, you, you saw everybody shuffle, so if we could just work towards that, that would be one. And I, I will admit to you, Jamie, I was very pleased to see that there were two separate clips, but when I got into them, they didn't match the agenda. So, there is a motion, is there a second? There is a motion, is there a second?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, can I put another, also open a discussion?
Yep.
Um, I think, uh. We need to talk, and it doesn't have to be tonight, it's not something that needs to be going on right now, but, um, we need to consider maybe going paperless with all of this. Because this is, you know, and that's a lot of paper every day, but I mean, every month, twice a week. His planning commission also has a stack of paper, um, we're in the day and age that paperless is a natural, a viable option. And, um, I don't see why we couldn't get something like that going, I don't, I don't expect it to happen the next month or the next two months, but. Um, we need to consider something like that, there's. It, it, you know, for one, organization, for two, the paper that we use, the printer that we go through. And the ink that we use, it can all just be, uh, less than.
I'm not, I don't have any problem with that. What was everyone else thinking?
Find that as well.
Yeah, we can start looking at, but let's deal with the motion first, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second, is there any other further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So Mike, you had one entering into the minutes, this idea of looking at going paperless. Jamie, is that something that you are interested in looking into? I think some things, some pitfalls to take a look into, is that to email it all to us. The, it's probably going to, uh, absolutely will go beyond the email size, so something like a Dropbox, something that is.
And Google, Google Docs is taught in the school now, so if grade schoolers can figure it out, I think the rest of us should be able to get that to go.
I will let you know that, um, when I'm running the website, yes. Uh, when they ran the website, there is a section in there, if you ask them, that, uh, that has files for all of these documents. May want to ask Kelly to call them to find out if that's still available. Is there?
If you guys do go paperless, like, I, we definitely need to double check and make sure there's no organic cover. Says there has to be a written document in front of you at all times, because without that, you're not gonna have, unless you all have computers. I'm just saying, or you print them off yourselves, thus, you have to look at that too. If there is some sort of.
There has to be the one that she brings that we sign.
But we signed.
I did.
So, I, I, I agree with you. I, I don't, I don't think why I wouldn't be able to have it in front of me on a computer, and then she just brings the paper.
I, I think the paperless is beautiful, I'm just, I'm just throwing out.
Well, there is a, but if somebody doesn't have their own personal computer, it's funny to use that.
You know, I think I had like something in front of you at those times, you know, we're gonna go through something, you have to dispute on a. Public, it's just something, I'd say something.
No, I think you're bringing up a good point, but let's see if we can functionally do it first, Jamie, and then if we can figure out how we can handle that.
Yeah, I don't think we should implement it and everyone show up here with a computer next month and try to go through it. Maybe slowly phase the paper out as we all get better and better.
I'm not against it, I just sound very thrown out.
And I mean, I, I. You know, our, our five hundred dollars that we get a month, I would forego that if the town wanted to buy, um. You know, the small iPads, and then, I don't know if that can be done legally with our money, but. Even if the town just provided those five hundred dollar iPads. And then they stayed with the town, the next councilman comes in, grabs an iPad, keys, and goes on a play. Uh, I would forgo my monthly salary to make that happen if that wasn't available.
My guess is there's other councils out there that have already kind of, uh, built this, uh, this technology.
I've sat meetings where the, everything that the councilman has on his, is on a screen behind, uh, next to the gallery. And the gallery's following along just the same as we are.
There's an answer out here.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find somebody who's already went to pick them up.
And I, and I ain't saying that our, our small town needs to be that elaborate with it, but I think that, you know, organization and. Having that all in a box that we all go pick up is kind of nineteen eighties.
I don't disagree, so we'll, we'll put that on the workshop agenda, if that's okay, Mike?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Is there anything that I haven't missed? Jamie, Russell, what is this here?
This is part of the, uh, for the, uh, the generator here.
Ah, this is a down here from the workshop. So Jamie, another thing that you need to add on to that, is the, um, the generator for this building? Would you give us a little update on that, chief?
Uh, yes, uh, in front of the board, we have a proposal from Jordan's Electric to install a sixty thousand kilowatt generator. An emergency standby generator that will power the police department as well as this building. That would allow this side of the building to be opened up for. A heating or warming shelter in the event that we have weather like this, or in summertime for a cooling shelter. Uh, total cost to install a generator is sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. That does not include if the gas meter, because it'll be powered by natural gas, if NIPSCO has to make any adjustments to the gas meter. I did my best to find out what those costs could incur. Um, according to the electrical engineer that came out, he does not believe, since there's already a chemical gas meter, that there will be any changes necessary. But until NIPSCO actually gets into working with the electrician on the actual generator, that can't be one hundred percent set in stone. So, the best estimate I can get from NIPSCO, if they do have to change the gas meter, is between four hundred and fifty dollars and two thousand dollars. Um, the second document you have is the seventy thousand dollar award from the State Homeland Security Grant. This is a one hundred percent match grant, or no match grant, uh, so we don't have to contribute any money. So as long as we stay under seventy thousand dollars, uh, we will be able to reimburse it one hundred percent.
But this is a reimbursable grant, meaning that we have spent out the money first.
You have to pay for it first, and then the state will reimburse us.
And that's why we have it in front of us today, because in order for us, before we have to approve funds, you can project started.
Yeah, unfortunately, if you, if you look on the bid, um, since this is kind of a custom-built generator with some one-time parts. It do require thirty percent down payment to start ordering.
You know, I believe Jamie, you said that we have that money available.
I will, I, I can find it, but the only thing is, once this money is spent. We're gonna have to, he says it's only a one-time reimbursement, so we're gonna have to wait. On anything else, to say, I'm gonna spend out seventy thousand out of somebody else's fund to pay for this. Cause it's not on the budget. So, uh, we'll have to wait for reimbursement to be able to do anything else fit. So, other than the, uh, New Focus, we're kind of done.
And we don't, we don't really know how long it would take to them to reimburse us, somebody.
Well, we have to wait for the work to be done, um, so that, that could be approximately six months. By the time they get the parts in and get the generator installed, and then by the time they say, we, we could be looking into the fall before we actually get reimbursed.
Well, we're gonna have to pay them until they're done, so thirty-five right up front, we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Oh, we still have to wait, it's only one time.
Well, I think in order to be able to get this generator and to use the grant funding, we need to, uh, do whatever it takes in order to be able to get this in. For several reasons, one, to make sure that the police have everything they need in case the power goes down, plus, you know, protecting the investment of this building. Plus, making sure that we have a warming, cooling system.
Especially in weeks like this.
Absolutely. So, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the, I guess it would just be seventy-five thousand?
Uh, to approve the contract from, uh, uh, we need to wait his electric.
Yeah, so, but I mean, don't we have to approve a dollar amount for them?
Uh, the total dollar amount is sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars.
Jamie, do we need to approve though, the, the actual payment itself at all, or to approve the, uh, the project and move forward?
Total amount and then the call.
Okay, alright, so then I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve, um, sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, for the, uh, reuse. So is that that correct?
Was that, was that a reset?
Uh, sixty-five, nine eighty-five.
Sixty-four, thank you, sir.
For the generator for the police department and community center, which will be reimbursed through the, uh, State Homeland Spirit Grant program.
Now, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Uh, one further question is, uh, if NIPSCO does come back and says you do have to upgrade your service here, or the finance, though, for that money?
Well, we have four thousand bills into the grant, so going on their high side of their ballpark estimate they gave me, it should still theoretically be reimbursable. If something comes up crazy and they come back with an eight thousand dollar bill, then we're on the hook for four thousand dollars.
We have to, we have up to seventy thousand dollars, so that's my motion, that I will approve up to seventy thousand dollars for the.
Generator installation.
Or generator installation, yes. Would that satisfy?
Yeah.
Good.
There is a motion and a second, any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Josh, I will give you credit now at this particular junction for the work that you put in, so thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jamie, thank you for providing the money in order to be able to do this, I think citizens will be served very well. Anything else?
Don't talk to Justin about our, those, the, the glory.
No, no, this one's all him.
Also, I'd like to thank Mary Jane for working with, uh, with chief and being able to find this one. There's so much of what we're able to do in town, I must do that. Is there anything I missed now? Okay, so we'll move on to the reports from officers, public works.
Uh, we do have a main break right now at Roseburg, Chicago, so I'm going there next.
Yeah.
Um. We had the previous video yesterday to the CCMD, where there was five contractors here, it's, uh, it's kind of a pretty good project. Uh, Spencer, being open to twelve, I think at one o'clock, um, so hopefully we'll get the numbers and we move forward with these, uh, projects.
Do you remember their contractors?
Grimmer. Ariel. Milestone, they're driving down, I'm gonna grab them. And there was, uh. A couple others that picked up, but they weren't present, they got plans.
I'll, no, I'm gonna outside and freeze. I'm sorry, thank you for knowing what you're doing, anybody else have anything for Randy, but we have.
Uh, Randy, just real quick, this is, this could then, just some extra paper somehow, they have something for Trojan.
Yeah, so I put it in my packet, just letting you know that's maintenance, routine maintenance.
Okay, so nothing we have to do, but just, okay.
They won't.
They won't.
Alright. Part of the department, there's nobody here for that, Jamie, can you give anything to report?
I do not, thank you.
Brett?
Uh, no, no. Anything new from last week?
You have any idea of how many, uh, permits we're up to in the department?
Fifty-eight, two came in, they have two applications.
Where are they gonna go, we're gonna want two new ones, you know?
Ensign.
Ensign, so they're going down, okay, they're gonna throw, finish that one, that's awesome. Uh. I'm not gonna, police department.
Uh, I'll go through my report very briefly, um, for the statistics, December wrapped up, uh, twenty twenty seven, so I'm just gonna go for the. Twenty twenty four, twelve holes, um, in the, twenty twenty four calendar year, the police department conducted two thousand. Um, in the twenty twenty four calendar year, the police department conducted two thousand fourteen traffic stops. They answered one thousand four hundred and seventy five calls of service. Out of that, six hundred and thirty four citations were issued, a hundred and thirty eight misdemeanor arrests, and forty one felony arrest. The board has, the next page after that is the breakdown for the final month of December. And then the two pages after that are the breakdown of the call of service for the year in higher T. After that, we have latest vehicle reports, nothing unusual there, and we have the latest content. That is all I have to report, unless you're bored, I see.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, redevelopment, back to you, Jamie.
We had a election bouncers. For New York, um, we had, um, everyone was looking, um, my great uh, down, and as much vice president, secretary. Right. Um, our January meeting of the, of the meeting here with the town councils and redevelopment commissions from Iberan and Couse. Full house, um, listening to a presentation from Porter County. Tourism and by the videos and places and goals for tourism.
It's great.
Awesome. And I guess the only other thing to add to that is, is we found out that uh. What is, will be the Country Kitchen Pancake House, those windows are going to be replaced, redevelopment has become a partner in that, and the facade. Windows will be starting to be replaced in the next two weeks, okay, we'll hear from them. And uh, the facade will be being fixed in the springtime at some point. And we would like to thank the uh, the new owners of the Country Kitchen Pancake House. For uh, deciding to fill the need that we currently need, we can all start here very soon to be able to uh, have eggs and coffee and. And uh, lunchtime stuff, so if you're, if the public's unaware, it's a scheduled to be a breakfast and a lunch place to begin. It's gonna be Country Kitchen Pancake House, it'll be a big sign. All right, did I miss everybody? Redevelopment, police, arts, building department, health and works. Brett, did you have anything for us? Jamie, did you have anything for us?
No.
All right, we have to accept the document, we have these in front of us now, we have the disbursement sheets, reading the three columns and then. So we have the total of five hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty seven cents. Transfers two hundred and three thousand three hundred ninety five dollars and twenty five cents. With a net of three hundred eighty four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and forty two cents. Is there a motion to approve the document as well? There is a second.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. But. Not necessarily aware of any uh, announcements to be made, um, anybody have anything?
Everybody currently staying warm, and then you guys do need a warming shelter, this and I believe uh. Other warming shelters in the area are available from the Porter County EMA, where you can activate uh. You know, this building, uh, it needed the phone numbers and.
Jamie, we had a post that we would put on the front of the website, I think we did it last year along with contact information. Is that something you can ask Kelly to post?
For warming shelters?
Put into a regular rotation when we're going to see extreme colds, you know, wind chills. So that the public is aware.
The uh, Cal's like Church Charles also a warming shelter.
We have, but we could use this for here, so we want to make sure that we have, there's under all processes. If for some reason you don't have the, the blurb, I think you have to, and chief as well.
Uh, yeah, I have.
We have a second. Excellent. Awesome. We don't touch, we've got a new fancy sign.
Seventy.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, we don't touch, it always.
No, it's not supposed to be touched, seventy.
Seventy degrees.
Great, well, please do not.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Please, let me.
Second, yes.
Any further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Motion passed.
Yeah, a lot of them.